Good evening to this full house for being here. I would like to call the Peoria Public School Board of Education meeting for April 14th, 2025 to order. Madam Secretary, if you will call the row for quorum.
Mrs. Kasek. Mrs. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Ivory. Mrs. Rose.
Present.
Mrs. Ross. Dr. Wilson.
Here.
President McConnell.
Here.
We have six present.
Thank you. May we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We would like to recognize our poster boards tonight from Dr. C.T. Vivian, Soaring and Reading to New Heights. Take a look, it is in a book. And on this side, we have Harold B. Dawson, Birds of a Feather, Keep Reading, and We Bloom Together. So, thank you, Dr. C.T. Vivian and Harold B. Dawson Middle School. Announcements from fellow board members. Oh, and I'd like to welcome our student board member. If you would just do a brief introduction, let us know your name and your school.
Good evening. My name is Brooklyn Patterson and I rep Peoria High and I'm going to school at Bradley University.
Thank you. Thank you, Brittany. Okay.
All right. Second Annual Multicultural Fair. PPS is looking for volunteers to help make this year's multicultural fair a success. Who can help? PPS staff, parents, and high school students. Volunteers get a free t-shirt. If you are interested, fill out the volunteer form or in contact Marjorie House. Let's celebrate culture, community, and connection together. Kindergarten Roundup is going wild again this year. Join us at the Peoria Zoo on September, I'm sorry, on Saturday, April 26th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. to get your little one ready for kindergarten. Is your enrollment paperwork ready? Visit the kindergarten roundup page on the PPS website to check for the proof of address documents needed. The 2025-26 school year is just around the corner. Let's make sure your kindergartner is set for success.
Cartwell, your mental well-being matters. Peoria Public Schools has teamed up with Cartwell to offer free therapy sessions for students. If you're interested, simply reach out to your school principal or counselor to learn more and get started. If you think your child could benefit from mental health support, you can reach out to Lynn Fier at 309-282-1919. Attention, high school students, parents, and guardians. The FAFSA due date is May 16th. If you haven't completed the FAFSA, this is your sign to get started or ask your counselor for help if needed. Filling out the FAFSA is required for anyone seeking financial aid for college or technical schools. Reach out to your school counselor for more information.
The Peoria Grow Your Own program is now accepting new teacher candidates. Grow Your Own provides social, academic, and financial assistance to qualify candidates to help them become certified teachers. The Peoria Grow Your Own program application window opens March 15th through May 1st.
Good evening. Parent University Block Party. Join us for the Parent University Block Party on April 29th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Woodruff Career and Technical Center. Get ready for a fun-filled, event-packed with excitement for the whole family. Enjoy raffle prizes, fun giveaways, games, contests, bouncy houses, and face painting for the kids. Plus, you can get summer program info to keep the learning going. Read 30 minutes every day. April showers tap the ground as blooming flowers spread all around. Spring has sprung, so take a seat and give your mind a daily treat. Just 30 minutes with a book each day can take you worlds and words away. So, read, relax, let stories bloom like petals bright in every room. Summer Inter Session. Summer School runs June 2nd through the 18th for kindergarten through eighth grade students with hands-on, project-based learning in partnership with the community organizations. Specials like pre-K, E.L., and special education will also be offered. Registration opens today and closes on April 30th. High school will focus on credit recovery and a special opportunity will be available for incoming kindergartners to kickstart learning with family support.
Good evening. Young Authors 2025. The 2025 Young Authors Contest is underway. Join us at the next Board of Education meeting to encourage and celebrate our young PPS writers. District winners will be recognized on April 28th. Easter Break. There will be no school and offices will be closed on April 18th and April 21st. PPS Apprenticeships. The PPS Apprenticeship Program is a workwhile-you-learn degree certificate program. If you want to be a special ed teacher, have an associate's degree, work as a professional or paraprofessional in the elementary school, dream of leading your own classroom, then this opportunity is for you. Join us for a virtual info session, April 23rd from 4:15, at 4:15. If you have questions, please contact Ms. Wilson, Linda Wilson, at PSD150.org. Applications are due by May 19th. Thank you.
Good evening. The Richwoods Jazz Ensemble, excuse me, hit all of the right notes at the Illinois State University Jazz Festival this past Saturday, earning first place in their division and second place overall in the two-day competition. Huge congratulations to the swinging Richwood Knights for representing our community with style and with sound. I think that deserves a round of applause. Congratulations again. Class of 2025 graduation, just what many of you have been waiting for. Class of 2025, it's your time to shine. Mark your calendars. Graduation for all three high schools will take place on Saturday, May 17th, at the Peoria Civic Center. The schedule is as follows. Peoria High, 10 o'clock a.m., doors open at 9:00. Manual High, 1 o'clock p.m., doors open at 12:00. Richwoods High, 4 o'clock p.m., doors open at 3:00. Doors will close promptly when each ceremony begins, so don't be late. Let's celebrate the incredible class of 2025. Thank you.
And good evening, as we round out our announcement. Wraparound Center. Do you need support? The Wraparound Center is a one-stop shop for those who might need help. There is therapy, counseling, access to a food pantry, a appointment, case management, or guidance for affordable housing. Located on the Latrobe side of Treewind School, it's open Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., even in the summer months. Just stop by or either call us at 309-282-1919, our Wraparound Center. Administrative Assistance Professional Appreciation Day. That's a mouthful. Administrative Assistance Professional Appreciation Day will be April 23rd. And this is a great time to thank, recognize the remarkable help from our staff who keeps things running smoothly behind the scenes. We are so grateful for everyone who works so diligently for our staff and our teachers and our students. Their work helps our buildings thrive, so thank you so much. At the end of a announcement, we have a full agenda, so I'm gonna ask, here now, everybody, tailor-fit all of your presentations to three to four minutes. Let's be respectful of the leadership team and for your board. This is a volunteer post and we all do have a full-time job and some of us have been up since 5:30 a.m., so thank you kindly. Our first item is our Director of School Safety, Mr. Boone, Remarkable Spirit Award.
Good evening. I'll move quick here. It is my pleasure to announce that one of our own officers, come on up here. He's the most nervous guy I've got, really hates getting awards, stuff like that, but he's been nominated for this award by a teacher that was at Peoria High School, by Sarah Ridley. Thank you. She wrote something very wonderful about you. Kwan is the epitome of what it means to be a member of the Pride. While he is an SRO, he is also an assistant football coach, a mentor to kids, and a friend to many staff members at the Pride. Kwan has helped me out several times with students by having conversations with them. He's amazing with special education students as well as general education students. Kwan is always there to lend a hand when needed. He truly goes above and beyond his job description on a daily basis. He cares deeply about the kids and helping to support them be successful in life. What has stood out to me the most about Kwan recently is his investment in Seven Mindsets. He's always talking to me about ways and ideas to incorporate Seven Mindsets into his daily work-life. He has Seven Mindsets posters in his office and in his locker room. To see a support staff member truly embrace and want to spread Seven Mindsets is remarkable. I'm extremely proud of this young man. We've been through a lot of ups and downs, he screamed at me a couple times, yelling at me on the phone, but it's because he's so passionate about kids. It's not an argument, he's always fighting for kids and he's really genuine and I'm glad to have him part of the team, so congratulations.
One second. One second. I just want to say, thank you, Ms. Murray. Appreciate you, Dr. Coleman. I appreciate Peoria High staff. I'm telling you, the battles that we go through every day, Zone 2 and the city. I just love what I do. I love Peoria. This is my city, this is our city, and I couldn't be more happier. Thank you. And thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate you. All right, our next presentation is Mr. Josh Collins, Director of Transportation.
All right. Thank you for having us this evening. We appreciate that. I got contacted and said that Mr. Bowen here was nominated for an award and my first thought was, really? So, I got, I get the honor of recognizing Mike. I can't say enough about Mike personally, but the nomination says that Mike is very informative. He assists with simplifying rules, policies, procedures, et cetera. He has a way with taking the confusion out of all of the verbatim, so all involved in the communication fully understands. Mike responds immediately to inquiries, no matter how big or small. He has been available to communicate without making me feel my inquiries do not matter or not that major. I appreciate all the time with making me feel all the inquiries are important. And I can say that outside of that and working with Mike, we work on a lot of projects. I try to keep him busy. There's probably a smirk. He's just amazing at what he does. He, behind, if you know Mike, behind the sarcasm, there lies somebody who is truly passionate about what he does, who cares deeply about the people that he works with and cares deeply about the students. He hides it well, but it's there and you can see it and it comes out in all of the things that he does, so congratulations, Mike.
I did have about a 20-minute speech lined up.
Sorry.
Everybody knows, I don't like to talk a lot, you know, I tend to be a pretty quiet guy. In my 26 years here, going on 26 years here, I've managed to avoid most awards that have come my way. When this, when this one came across and I was asked if it would be something I'd want to accept, I happily said yes. Thank you all for this, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. And Mr. Collins, the comms team is gonna take a photo of you guys out in the hallway. We would like to document that. Thank you. Next item, Awards and Recognitions. Dr. Karat.
Thank you very much. We have a full house and just wanted to share with you, at every board meeting, we do recognize schools. For peer public schools, attendance is very, very important. We have been monitoring it and perfecting it every year since I've been here for 10 years and the principals and their staff have done a really nice job. Some of you may have gotten phone calls, you may have gotten home visits or whatever. So, this, so this category is Most Improved Attendance for March, and what we do is we look at the percentage they've increased this March, well, the last month, compared to 2023, 2024 actually. And so, we have, because if students are not at school, they're not, we're not able to impact them and you're not able to learn, so coming to school every day is very, very, very important. We always talk about it's the first step towards school improvement. So, and people who know us at Peoria Public Schools, our teachers, our staff, we have to work very, very, very hard for every benefit and points that we receive. So, for this, for the month of March, there were three schools, the majority of schools improved, but three schools got the top award. Treewind increased from last year to, and I'm gonna call them, I'll ask Treewind to come up, Whittier to come up, and Elise Fort Allen to come up to the podium. But Treewind increased almost by 5% compared to last, March of last year. Whittier, 3% compared to March of last year, and Elise Fort Allen, 2.6% compared to. So, this is pretty impressive. Anything over really 3% is very, very significant. So, our student board member will come out and she has gift cards for you as well and if you need more, just, because I know you actually have a team with you, so I'll get, I'll give you one for Mr. Allen, so Mr. Brown and Mr. Allen. So, go ahead and share with us just one or two points due to, due to time, is that okay? But congratulations. Let's give them all a round of applause.
Thank you. I just want to say that we have a good staffer at Treewind and we have a lot of family-oriented goals, so we work together really well as a team. And our attendance team really concentrates on trying to have incentives that students want and making sure that students feel safe and want to have fun every day at school.
5%, that's awesome. Keep it up, okay? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Allen. Did you want to introduce your teacher with you, Mr. Brown?
Yes, this is Mr. Brian Allen. He's my right-hand man. And I thank him for coming up. I invited everybody and he showed up. Thank you.
Let's make sure he gets a gift card. What about Whittier, 3%? Ms. Polnitz?
Hello. Just some things we're doing at Whittier is making school fun, making it a place kids don't want to miss out on. We have conversations on accountability with parents and students and that seems to be going a long way as well. And I hope that I'm surrounded by an amazing team, all hands on deck. We celebrate the kids when we see them and we make Whittier a place that feels like home.
Awesome. Thank you. Mrs. Shula is representing Elise Fort Allen. You guys increased by 2.6% compared to last year, same time. Would you like to share any tidbits with us?
Sure. We have an amazing leader who brings the energy every day. Hi, Dietrich. He knows fellow writers here tonight. But we try to make it fun, from the music to the incentives. It's in everyone's face, including the parents. So, sorry, parents, if any of you are here. I know we're constantly spreading the news and getting the kids excited and calling parents if they're not showing up, so it's working.
Thank you. Keep it up. And President McConnell, I can move on to the next category. I would like to call up Northmore and Chatter Oak and Whittier again. And this one is Chronic Absenteeism Improvement. And so, PPS, we're doing a really nice job and we presented a lot to other school districts because they do want to learn some strategies from us in terms of improving those percentages. And some schools in the past may have had 35%, 45%, 39%. And really, if you miss 18 days a year, you're considered chronic absent, absent, right? And so, by the state. And so, what we want to do, and then we get, we get like bad reports on that. So, what research has done for principals and guys, you, all the principals, they have, they know who the kids are and they have conversation with the children every month. There's a strategy and an art and science to it, because if I miss six days, you know, they're like, okay, you're down that road and so, and you can get off, because you guys, maybe you can, you can explain to, to the public how that works. So, let's go with Northmore, because Northmore, you've increased by 50% and maybe you can tell us what that means as well.
Very blessed. We have gotten this award several times this year.
Yes.
And we're just, we're working hard. It takes a whole staff effort. Marie Lindahl is our art teacher and she does check-ins with our students who are leaning towards falling on those 18 days. And we do incentives each month. This month, they're coloring a kite for every day that they're there and then at the end of the month, we get to go out and fly kites together. And so, each month, it's kind of been a theme of doing that. I think our house system that we've just instilled at Northmore this year is playing a bit part of that. Every month, we have a monthly house attendance and they, the winners get to decorate our main core value hall with their colors. Until last Friday, the Black House was the one that came in and they make their t-shirts on paper and streamers and it's really tacky-looking, but it's, they're so proud of it, so that's just what we're doing.
So, this is Ms. Kim Sack and she's the principal at Northmore. And Ms. Sack, do you want, can you please introduce your teacher with you and your partner in crime?
Marie Lindahl, she's our art teacher.
And also on your attendance and chronic absenteeism committee. Yes, thank you, Ms. Lindahl. And then, Chatter Oak, Mrs. Rodriguez, Principal of Chatter Oak. You've gotten this award before as well.
Yes, this is our third month in a row, but we have bumped up to second place. So, I will say in the month of March, nothing draws in kids like state testing. And so, there was just a real importance, priority on it. I think our families were all on board. We had our younger classes cheering on the older classes and so, I.A., are you ready for testing? We were, and we were there. We came for it. So, yeah, I hope to be here next month for this month.
And I get your announcements and it's very encouraging and fun and uplifting as well, so I'm sure that makes a difference. And Ms. P., one or two items, congratulations. You probably should get another gift card. Brooklyn, let's give her another gift card, because she's in both categories. Good attendance, improved attendance, and improved chronic absenteeism.
So, just to touch on the data you were talking about that research provides, it is amazing. We pull it up every single day and we meet with our kids because it identifies the students that can fall off chronic absenteeism. So, it really guides conversations with our parents and with our students. The wonderful Michael Barber gave us the idea of falling off the, falling off my list. I don't want you on my naughty list anymore.
Yes.
I mean, the kids take pride in it and again, we're celebrating them and just reminding them why we need them in school.
Yeah. Thank you so much for explaining that. So, if they have not reached 18, there's hope.
There is hope.
Because they can fall off.
Yes.
So, that's, I love that strategy. We came up with that, Mr. B., what was that, two years ago or so? Or is it this year? Just this fall. So, we just try different things and so, everybody, let's give the principals and their team members. President McConnell, I'll say, I mean, these were the top ones, but all of the principals, PPS, they're working very hard and they're seeing some very good results.
Nice. Thank you, leadership. So, this next item, I am excited about. I am a sports mom, but before I get to the winning team, I want to recognize their principal, who is now Dr. Devon Hawks. Would you please stand, ma'am? And Mrs. Hawks is a product of, of our district. She graduated from Richwood. She's been back as a teacher, assistant principal, special education, and it's people like that who have graduated from our district who choose to come back and serve is amazing. And so, I want to thank you, Mrs. Hawks, for your dedication and for your loyalty. And then, as I queue up, the Manual High School Basketball Team, I'm gonna call Mr. Marvin Jordan, who is the basketball coach.
Thank you for that. But just to speak real quick behalf on the basketball team and the recognition, we would like to appreciate it and just to, you know, let everybody know that what we are doing is recognize, you know, the hard work and dedication that these guys have put in day in and day out, or the coaching staff. It's just a resemblance of, you know, the administration that we also have too, the beautiful administration that we have that works as hard every day and also has been supporting us each and every day throughout it all. So, again, thank everybody for the recognition for this, please.
And then, if you would kindly call up each one of the team players, just, if you could just have their names and you guys go up to the mic and then we're gonna have you go out for a photo, okay?
We have here tonight, we got Reggie Postaway, we have Dietrich Richardson, Amari Breedlove, Amani Breedlove. Josh Humbos, we have Taj Tolliver, manager, Keon Walker's here. I have assistant coach, DeMarco Gray with me, I have assistant coach, Sam Morgan with me, and assistant coach, Paul Burse, here with me tonight as well.
Hey, Coach, can you talk about who's going where in terms of college?
So we have, first and foremost, Dietrich Richardson going to Bradley University here in Peoria. Amari Breedlove is going to Loras College to play football. And Keon Walker, our manager, is going to Eureka College.
Yeah. Yeah, and your leadership and your athletic director, if you could mention them too.
Yes. Our athletic director, Constance Jackson, is back here behind us here. Again, has our back each and every day, and has always been there whenever we needed her, and is a very, very important piece of our success here.
And your building leadership, can you call them up with you, so that they can be in the picture with you?
Dr. Hawks is here. Ms. Newman Evans is here. Oh, yeah, Ms. Morrison's here right now.
Okay, thank you so much. And the comms team would like to have you gather out in the hallway, so we can capture a photo. And Mrs. Hawks, if you want to share something with us.
I tried to hold it in.
But you must.
But I wanted to make sure everyone knew how spectacular these gentlemen are. I know we're rushing, but they deserve a few more moments, because this team is spectacular on and off the court. They have always maintained an average GPA of 3.0 or higher the entire time. And then we have, I got to point out my two, Josh and Reggie, raise your hands, highest GPAs in the building.
Dietrich. She needs to talk to Edmund, so he goes to the same college you go to. Okay? Thanks. That's nice. Thank you. Okay, middle school champions, and I know, is Mr. Guyton here? Okay, okay, Mr. Guyton. And I know that the middle school championship coach is present, and we're going to give him some flavor too. So, but I'll follow the lead of the, of Mr. Guyton.
Well, thank you. Excuse me. Thank you for having us. We'll go through this, I want to give them their flowers as well, but go through this as quickly as possible. But first, I just wanted to thank, you know, a few people for having a fantastic season. You know, first, the principals, I just want to thank you all for having the games ready, having the game day activities going, and making sure everything that we needed was there in order to have our basketball games. And I want to thank Chief Boone, Tim Wilfmeier. This year is the first year, like, we were really, really on the same page from security to principals, and it made for an excellent game day experience for everyone, so our families and our spectators and our kids could have a safe space to play the sport that they love. Also, to Mr. Josh Collins at Transportation, not one game was canceled due to transportation this year, and that was really a fantastic job, because we know how important it is to get our students from school back to home, and to squeeze in our athletes at the middle school level to make sure that they didn't miss their games. It's a phenomenal feat from him and his team. And also, my trusted assistant and partner, Mr. Johnson, for being there in spaces that I couldn't, and helping to execute this plan that we have, to make sure that sports is important here to our students, to our families, and kids can play them in a safer space and environment. So I want to thank all of you for making this championship day possible. Once again, good evening, Dr. Karat, President McConnell, and the Board of Education. Of course, I'm Mr. Guyton, and I would, I would like to recap the 2025 Boys Basketball City Championship. The Roland Acres Cougars, junior varsity, began their quest to become city champions by dominating the regular season. They finished the regular season with a 14-0 record and a 10-0 record in the conference, which earned them the number one overall seed for the city tournament. On February 15th, at Woodruff, in the semi, in a semifinal, Roland Acres defeated the Liberty Lightning 34-24. Levi Edwards scored a game-high 14 points. The Cougars advanced to the championship game to face the number-two seeded Sterling Jaguars. Roland Acres JV defeated Sterling 39-31 to win the city championship. The Cougars finished with a perfect record of 16-0. Give a round of applause for that. And I'd like to call up those participants, starting with Principal Michael Barber, Coach Terrell Rogers. Roster, DeMichael Anderson, Kobe Beckman, Micah Slater, Amir Johnson, Levi Edwards, Jace Richter, Willie Coleman, Anthony Harris, Jareem Seidel, Jalen Clark, Jalen Skirlock, and Amari Johnson. Ladies and gentlemen, assistant coach Thomas Lyles. Ladies and gentlemen, your 2025 Junior Varsity Boys Basketball City Champion, the Roland Acres Cougars. Before I ask the coach to say a couple words about the season, parents and supporters of these student athletes, please stand and be acknowledged. Coach Rogers, quick words?
First off, I want to thank the board for the recognition. I want to thank our parents for, you know, bringing our kids. I want to thank Barber and Mr. Riley for the opportunity. It was good seeing my boys develop from last year to this year, you know. We had a lot of things we had to overcome, you know. So it was good seeing that. It was better seeing the development than winning the championship, I say, because I actually seen some growth within my boys. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Good evening. Well, thank you for recognizing us tonight. We did have a great season with basketball. The basketball, to me, is second. It's about developing kids. It's about teaching them, about life experiences, how to, how to lose graciously, how to overcome adversity. And so, our, both my coaches did a great job with our boys this year. We're very proud of them and the accomplishments that they had. Thank you.
Yes.
Are they taking a picture outside, or?
Yeah, they're going to capture the, the photo out there. Well, you want to wait until, until you are done, so that the entire group...
Okay, now for the varsity. The Roland Acres Cougars Boys Varsity Basketball Team had to win three games to win the city championship. They accomplished this feat. The Cougars, a four seed, began the city tournament by defeating the number-five seed Lincoln Mustangs in a quarterfinal, 50, 50-23. DeTavion Hayes Foreman led Roland Acres with 26 points. Advancing to the semifinal, the Cougars met the National League co-champion, number-one seed Elise Fort Allen Riders. The Cougars got off to a fast start and upset the Riders 55-37. DeTavion Hayes Foreman once again led the way with 16 points. Damian Thomas added 15 in that game. In the championship game, Roland Acres continued down the upset path, defeating the number-two seed Von Stewart Vikings 50-42, avenging an earlier loss in the season. DeTavion Hayes Foreman led the Cougars with 15 points. Roland Acres finished the season as city champions with a record of 14-3. Give it up for that real quick. Once again, introduce the team. Principal Michael Barber, Coach Alvin Riley. Roster, DeTavion Hayes Foreman, Lee Moore, Kyriece Carter, Spencer Irvin, Damian Thomas, Anthony Dismu, Jonel Haley, Brady Irvin, Casey Johnson, Levi Fisher, Braxton Prunier, Ellister Junior? I'm sorry, Ellister Jennings, Quincy Artist, Cam Akins, and Zaire Bush. Ladies and gentlemen, please give a nice round of applause one more time for your 2025 Varsity Boys Basketball City Champion, Roland Acres Cougars. And once again, parents and supporters of these varsity athletes, please stand up.
Parents?
I want to thank the board, Dr. Karat, all of the support of the city. I, it makes it easy to win at Roland Acres. I take that back. It don't make it easy. Because Mr. Barber is strict about education. He's strict about attendance. He is strict about behavior. So I have to win without the best kids. Sometime, we have the best kids walk in the halls, because it's all about class, the way you represent the school. And so, I really appreciate that. It gives us an opportunity to develop these kids, to level these kids. And what I found out, and I just want to say this, y'all, I didn't just win the city one time. Not two times, but three times. And closing with this, I believe I told y'all I'll be back. And I won't tell y'all again. Y'all will see me a few more times.
He is so modest.
And once again, Mr. Riley always figures out a way to make it about him. And now, they had fantastic job, Roland Acres Cougars, both JV and varsity. We thank you for your sportsmanship, most importantly, from us. So, thank you, God.
And notable, since we are winning at this middle school level, we have this expectation that the winning is going to continue on into the high school. So I hope that we are creating space for, for the middle school program to parlay over to the high school. This is how districts build champions. And every district, when you look at schools that have won state championships, have a district-wide internal system that breeds and cultivates. And so, let's just make this a habit, so that our kids can be exposed to global opportunities. That is one benefit in winning championships at the state level, is that you are now on a national stage, and recruiting opportunities are, just become monumental. So let's give our kids every opportunity to be able to see the world. And if basketball takes them there, grateful. Thank you so much. So Mr. Barber stepping out. Let's go to remarkable, then, let me call Dr. Coleman up. We are going to switch up, since Mr. Barber's stepping out for a photo, we're going to move on to the Remarkable Student A. M. Award, and that will come from Dr. Coleman. Okay, we'll just, we'll, we'll circle back to it.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm here to present the students who have, are being recognized for the Daughters of the American Revolution Good Citizen Award. It is given to senior students who demonstrate dependability, which includes truthfulness, loyalty, and punctuality; service, which includes cooperation, courtesy, and consideration of others; leadership, which includes personality, self-control, and ability to assume responsibility; and patriotism, which includes unselfish interest in family, school, community, and nation, to an outstanding degree. Tonight, we would like to recognize the recipients of the awards. We have their principals here to call them all up. So can I have the three high school principals here? From Manuel High School, Dr. Devon Hawks. From Peoria High School, Mr. Sean McGinnis. And from Richwoods High School, Mr. William Robinson.
Hello again. I'm introducing Alexandra Ocampo. Alexandra is a phenomenal student. She is a member of our JROTC. Just a couple things. She does have a 4.5 cumulative GPA, has won 27 awards during her three years of JROTC, including the Superior Cadet Award, the Reserve Officers Association Excellence Award, the Batillion Staff Award, and the Cutter Guard Drill Team. She's highly respected by the other cadets and her students and all of her teachers at Manuel. She is a member of the 2025 Sterling Merit Group and in the National Honor Society. I'm cutting it kind of short, so that we're not too long tonight. She has been accepted to several colleges, including Gonzaga University, the University of Oregon, Rutgers University, the University of Pittsburgh, the University of Virginia, Penn State, the University of California Irvine, and the University of California, Santa Barbara. Did I get them all? Because I don't know where. I don't know where she will go. She has a big decision ahead of her. But we know she's going to be phenomenal. We cannot wait to follow her, to see all of the wonderful things she does in her adult life. So this is Alexandra Ocampo.
I just want to say thank you. I'm really appreciative of Manuel High School, especially for the program. If it weren't for the program, I probably would not be here where I am today. And I would like to thank my mom, who's over there.
Mom, stand up.
All right. Good evening, board. Just so you guys know, I did write some words. I was totally planning on coming up here and embarrassing Brooklyn. She knows that. So I did write some words tonight. I like to ramble on. So tonight, I get to recognize someone real special, Brooklyn Patterson, our Daughters of the American Revolution Good Citizen Award winner. Leadership is a skill. It's not a title. It's not a popularity contest. It's something that's built over time, and I'm lucky to work in a building where teachers help build that skill every day. Brooklyn is what it looks like when a student takes that and runs with it. She shows up. She works hard. She holds herself and others to a high standard. She takes tough classes. She's in the top 5% of her class. She's involved in everything. She's the board rep tonight.
Yes.
She's in Key Club, our pride team, you name it. And she's in our community, giving time to events like Juneteenth, Parent University. But more than anything, Brooklyn leads with her heart. She's consistent. She's humble, and she makes our school better. We're proud of her. Let's give it up for Brooklyn Patterson. One last thing. She's going to Bradley. She dropped that bomb on me tonight, as well as everybody else.
I just want to say thank you. And if it wasn't for Peoria High, I wouldn't be able to do community service and the things I do. But I think that if you don't have service or if you don't have leadership, you have nothing at all as a student here. So, thank you.
Excellent.
Good evening, Dr. Karat, Board of Education. I am Billy Robinson, and I am proud to recognize our Daughters of American Revolution winner, Olivia Howery. Ms. Howery depicts all of the qualities of the Daughters of American Revolution winner, but most of all, I think it's her dependability, service, and leadership. She is a leader at Richwoods High School, and that is a challenge. We have so many fantastic, amazing students in our IB program. She excels even in that elite, elite group of students with an over 4.8 GPA and is the top of the class. This is just one of the first awards she's going to win in the next month. She's going to be at Sterling Merit, our Senior Honors Night, and I am excited to announce that she's going to be going to Mizzou. And she had a bunch of colleges vying for her as well. So we cannot wait to see what she's going to accomplish. We are so incredibly proud of her accomplishments now, and look to see what her bright future holds.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm just super proud to be representing Richwoods here tonight in the DAR. Robison and really all my amazing teachers just create such a great environment at Richwoods, that I just really woke up and I'm excited to just be there every day. And just, people like that are really the people who push you to be better. And just my parents, who instilled a great work ethic in me from a young age, so...
And parents here with you. May the parents stand up.
Oh, yeah, they're right there. So, yeah, just super grateful for just all the people in my life, because that's how you get better, and that's how you support each other for that. So, thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you, and if you guys would go and meet our comms person for your photo. And our next item is the Teacher of the Year, and that will be presented by Mr. Barber. If he's done with his photo op, Mr. Barber, okay, there he is.
Well, good evening again. It is my pleasure to introduce to you the Don Ferris Teacher of the Year, Katie Welch. She is a 7th grade math teacher at Rolling Acres Middle School. She does an outstanding job with her students, she is a dedicated professional, she's an excellent, excellent math teacher. Her scores with her kids, the way she grows those kids throughout the course of the year is really unbelievable. She gives up her prep to take kids into her room to help tutor them. She's working in small groups in exactly what the district has asked her to do throughout the year. She is really a model teacher for all others in the district. It is my honor and privilege to introduce to you Katie Welch.
Thank you, Board of Education. Thank you, Dr. Karat. Thank you, Mr. Barber, colleagues, and my family. My dad told me many years ago that you cannot put a value on loving your job, and I love my job. God has blessed me with the best team I could possibly ask to work with. We have awesome administration, we have awesome teachers, awesome support staff, and awesome families. And at Rolling Acres, we truly believe that if we work together, every student can learn, and every student can be successful. So, thank you to the board, thank you, Dr. Karat, and thank you, Mr. Barber, for giving me that opportunity every day.
I'm Mrs. Ferris, and I am very honored to meet you, and it's always an honor. They wish you, we can't leave District 150. You're great, thank you.
That's so nice. Okay, and our next two recognition will be presented by Dr. Karat, once this photo is over.
President McConnell, Mrs. Welch's family, they're here as well, you can ask them to stand and look at their eyes, that'd be great.
Sure. Will the family of Mrs. Welch stand, please? Now, stay there, guys. All right, thank you so much, Mrs. Welch and family, and Mr. Barber for your leadership. Okay, you may start now.
Thank you. We're excited to announce that Jessica Hines is the recipient of the district-level Those Who Excel Volunteer of the Year Award. Jessica has shown incredible dedication to our schools and Peoria Public Schools for the last three years. Her leadership, organization, enthusiasm, and ability to engage other volunteers has made a significant impact on our schools and community. She's also an advocate for children through her work with CASA and other organizations. So please join us in congratulating Jessica Hines for her outstanding service and commitment to making a difference in our district. Ms. Jessica Hines?
Thanks so much, Dr. Karat, Board of Education. I just want to thank Mrs. Susan Martin, who got this ball rolling here. And, you know, a lot of times I had people ask me, why are you doing all of that? And the other night, I was thinking about it, and I thought about Mrs. June Tyler at Woodrow Wilson, what was Woodrow Wilson Primary School many years ago. And I remember Field Day, and I remember Grandparents' Day, and all the things that she did. And those are the reasons that I show up, in order to give our kids those experiences, and also to show up for those who show up for our kids every day, our principals, our teachers, our secretaries, our custodians, they're all there every day, day in and day out. And that is why I do what I do.
And board, the final category is, we are thrilled to announce that Family Core Team at Manuel High School has been honored with the district-level Those Who Excel Team Award. This recognition celebrates their unwavering commitment to supporting students and their families in our community. The Family Core Team serves as a vital liaison between schools and families, tirelessly working to remove various barriers that prevent students from attending school regularly. By connecting with individual students and families, the Family Core Team helps to ensure that every student has the opportunity to succeed. In addition to the team's recognition, we would also like to highlight Carl Holloway, whose exceptional work with this team has also earned him very high praises. Carl specializes, he really does, in reaching out to families and students who have been difficult to connect with. His efforts at both Manuel and Peoria High exemplify the spirit of dedication and resilience that this award represents. Congratulations to the Family Core Team and Mr. Carl Holloway for their outstanding contributions to our schools and community. We are incredibly proud of your achievements and the positive impact you've had on the lives of our students and families. So I'm going to call the team up. Marvin Jordan, is Marvin here?
He is.
Stan, okay. I have to say that this young man, I was his principal at Manuel. He took us to state, I remember that experience. I remember exactly where you went to college, Niagara in Canada, right? And then you came back, and so we're really proud of you. So the Family Core Team, come up. Mr. Tyler, are you part of that? Dr. Hawks, take it away.
Mr. Holloway?
Good evening, my name is Stan Hagan. We thank Dr. Karat, Board President McConnell. This is for short people. Rest of the board and the district leaders, we appreciate you, we're humbled by this acknowledgement. I got team, Ali Ramos, she helps with the students who English is second language, so we're bridging that cultural barrier this year, this is her first year.
Nice.
I got Mr. Jordan, we've already met him, took him away from me, and then he comes back. And Mr. Carl, who really, he finds the ones that we just can't get to. Sunday nights, Sunday evenings, weekends, late nights, he will go find the students that we're looking for, to make sure that they're back where they need to be.
Nice.
I want to say thanks to Ron Tyler, our CEO, and Lady Ferguson. Sam, is he here? Sam Durin, our supervisor? Not, well, he's here in spirit. We just want to thank you guys. Over the years, we've seen a lot of things change, political climate, economic climate, but there's one thing that never changes, and my late mentor, she just passed away, Linda Millen, a lot of people will remember her, she used to always say, it's about the kids, that's the most important thing. So, our job is not to drag students to school, which we will do if we need to, but we want to make sure, we want to make sure that they feel safe, wanted, and valued, and school is a place they're dying to get to, not get out of. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Just one thing I forgot, Jessica, is I noticed your entire family is here, so let's have them stand and be recognized as well. Thank you for sharing her with all the schools.
Yeah.
She's worth so much money for PPS. Over $50,000, if not more, a lot more, just in fundraising. So thank you, family, for sharing her with us. Thank you.
Thank you so much, family. As we are about to go into district presentations, I just want to recognize a group of students who was curious about the school board and the way our public school system works. And so I'm gonna ask those students with glow, I see some of you guys, if you'll stand up, no, stand up, guys. All of you are glow present. So I'm expecting some of you guys eventually will be a candidate on a, you know, commission and run for a school board seat. It's very possible, and so thank you for being here, and I understand some of you guys have to leave because it's late and you got homework, so thank you for being here. All right, thanks. Our district presentations are as following. We have Holt Center for Healthy Living update, and the director, Mrs. Andrea Parker, thank you for being here, and you may come to the podium.
Good evening, and thank you for the invite to allow the Holt Center to give you some updates of where you spend your money on the students we take care of. I'm stepping aside tonight and allowing my team to do this presentation. Due to time, they're on.
Good evening, my name is Ella Dancy, I am a health education specialist here at Holt Center. And so if we could go two slides forward, we can skip that one for time. First of all, I want to thank you all for the longstanding relationship that Holt Center has with Peoria Public Schools and the field trips that we do every year. So, all of these numbers to date were from April 4th, so they have increased since then, and we are booked all the way through the end of the school year. But so far, we have had 210 field trips to us at Holt Center, bring over 4,000 students in kindergarten, 2nd, and 4th through 8th grade. Next slide, please. Outreach Education, so this is another relationship that we have started this year after increased requests from different schools with specific education they were wanting to see inside the classroom. So this is an additional expanded contract that we started this year with mental health and sexual and reproductive health. Our mental health programs, which is brand new this year, have seen 3,926 students as of last Friday, which is going to increase still, and we have seen 2,967 students with our sexual and reproductive health programming. Next slide, please. We also, at no additional cost to the district, provide specialized programming upon request for special groups or schools that have identified a special need. So, life skills groups, Jamison School, our alternative programs such as the Manual Options Program, they will reach out to us with requests about mental health, social-emotional learning, sexual and reproductive health, nutrition, anything like that. We have adapted existing programs or developed brand-new programs for these schools upon request. I'm gonna move it over to Mr. Nate.
Hello, everyone, my name is Nate Johnson, I am also a health education specialist at Holt Center for Healthy Living. Can you go to the next slide, please? One of our programs that we fund through some Holt Center grants is our Adolescent Health Empowerment Program. This program is geared towards educating adolescents how to navigate healthcare both pre and post-high school graduation. Year-to-date, we have educated a little more than 650 students, many of which are getting ready to graduate high school. Next slide, please. And then another program that we're really excited to have is our WELL Program, which stands for Wellness Education and Lifestyle Program. This program is a youth type 2 diabetes prevention program that we have a really good partnership with our school-based health centers. Clinic staff members will refer patients, students anywhere between ages of 8 and 18 that are at risk of developing type 2 diabetes, and they are matched with our health and wellness coaches. And we meet with them one-on-one over a course of 12 sessions, where we educate them how to improve their health. And year-to-date, we have completed 41 youth and adolescent health coaching clients, and that number is quickly growing as well. And last, one of the cool things that we do is we partner with many agencies, but we do have a really good health fairs and outreach events that we do throughout the school year as well. Just this school year, we have educated a little over 1,000 high school students at all the get-yourself-tested events. All right, thank you.
I love it, thank you. What an awesome partnership, and we know that health is wealth, and so we thank you for the partnership, and Ms. Parker, we appreciate your leadership. Thank you again. Bridge to Success Engineering and Business Talent, Ms. McCracken.
Dr. Karat and Board of Education members, I had the pleasure this year to work with the Bradley University in implementing the Bridge to Success Engineering and Business Club for Peoria Public Schools, including 11th and 12th graders from all three high schools. I'd like to introduce the team. I'll start with Dr. Josh Lever, he is the Dean for Future Initiatives. We have Dr. Susan, yeah, she's the Associate Dean of Student Success. And Dr. Chris is the Dean of the Foster College of Business and Caterpillar and the College of Engineering and Technology. I'm gonna let them do their presentation and explain what was accomplished.
Dr. Karat and the board, thank you for this opportunity to share some of our success stories with you. So this was a, this is a partnership, it's a community partnership, really, and the whole team came together. We also had the Illinois Math Academy involved, and also the Asian Indian Community Collaboration of Peoria. So it was a group effort, so many different organizations came, and we were able to really pull this off. Our purpose was mostly just to make sure that we create these new paths and a way for our local students, our Peoria Public School students, to have a chance to engage with us in a very meaningful way, with hands-on and learning experiences. And my goal in the first year, this started in July of last year, and I made a presentation with the Board of Trustees, I said, of Bradley, and I said, you know, this is something that we could be working on. And I didn't realize that it would come true so quickly, thanks to Dr. Karat and Robert McCracken and the whole team here to make that happen. So, my, so our goal was to do a pilot in the first year, which was about 10 weeks long, and we were shooting for about 20, maybe about 20 students, and we actually got 28 students, I think, in the first cohort. And our goal next year is to actually go ahead and expand this to maybe more schools in the school district, and then also to expand it to 40, 50, and so on, so that all of these students actually have a chance to look at these, really, engage in these really cool activities. For example, I mean, Dr. Kali Rose, he talks about engineering activities, he's a physics professor by training, but he teaches finance, and he teaches derivatives, and markets, and other things like that, and he makes things fun, too. And Dr. Candice Esken, she's a brilliant management and leadership professor, and she actually talks about, she has a wonderful program called Have a Heart, and it's about business activity. So what we do is we basically have the students have about one hour of engineering exposure and one hour of business exposure, so that we know that in the real world, in the actual workplace, both of those things actually go together. So that's our goal, to give them that kind of an exposure. And here you see some hands-on learning experiences, and maybe what I'll do is I'll have Joshua Luer come in, maybe talk a little bit about this particular project.
Sure. Just really quickly, thank you, Dr. Karat and board. We really enjoyed your students. We were with them for 20, we had 20 sessions, it was wonderful. That was a called product dissection, where Dr. John Yu bought some grinders and some drills, and we had the students actually tear them apart and see how they were working on the inside. So we're trying to build curiosity within the students, and we think we did a good job. And, you know, we asked the students, what were you curious about before this practice section? And then the student said, this is Rodrigo, he said, I was wondering how everything worked on the inside, and after I opened it, I found out how it all worked. And so, you know what, that's that, you know, we're trying to build curiosity, how do you get students to, you know, come back to our program, or build our engineers, or build our business future, our pipeline in the future? This is how we do it. The last one is just, we're just planning for next year, and Dean Chris mentioned it, we really appreciate everything you've done for us, because I love your advisors, the mentors, they come out every week, so we So we got to meet like Neil Payne and other people, they're just great from Manual. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I just also wanted to add that, you know, I think that one of the previous speakers said, "It's all about the students," and it is definitely all about the students. And I just wanted to have Ms. Suzuki run, say a couple words, she's our Assistant DM.
Well, thank you. While I didn't get to take part in all of the hands-on activities, I got to take part in the very first one where we get to put t-shirts together. And my focus and role is really just to make sure that students have a comfortable space and a comfortable person to talk to, and so that carries on into colleges and universities, because it can be a very scary time of transition. And so, that's what we try to accomplish, is to just create a warm and welcome space for these students.
Thank you.
President McConnell. Bradley is, we're doing more and more work together, and I wanted to thank Robin. Dean Chris had this idea for quite some time, and when Robin came on, she was able to sort of be the champion for us. So, I wanted to also share with the Board that we had representation from all three high schools. Rich Woods, I think Manuel had about six that, seven, six, six that one of their teachers brought with them, and he, they just loved it so much. And I know with the new president of Bradley University, Judge Shaddet, his goal is to even expand and do more with the community, so we're very, very excited. And I love your vision about expanding to even more students. It was very high quality, and as you said, igniting curiosity and growing engineers and future STEM leaders. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the partnership. And now, we have a break. This is our intermission of sorts. And so, Dr. Andrews, you want to present this outstanding group, or Mr. Christian Lloyd is the director, okay? Mr. Lloyd?
Yeah, I'm going to say something. I was asked to do a presentation, a Black History presentation, and so, I was in the presence of Mr. Lloyd, this young man, and I didn't really know him very well. But it just so happened, a day before I met you, I found out, oh, a jazz all-star director was sort of taking a leave because of lots of other things going on, challenges going on. So I heard him perform, because he had a couple of students with him as well. And after the presentation, after I spoke and we came to the end, I walked up to him and had a conversation with him, and I said, "Hey, there's an opportunity, da-da-da-da-da, if you're interested, please follow up." And he did. And so, the rest is history. I mean, we're talking about February, so this is, we just wrapped up March. So this is one month, okay? So, and he can, he can add to that.
Hello Board, how are you all doing today?
Thank you, we're doing well.
Great to hear. You know, sometimes in life, we're not prepared for adversity, you know? We don't know what to do when it happens. I'm on the army road, so I yell a lot, so please forgive, please forgive. Sometimes we don't even know what to say when adversity strikes. And even Peoria Jazz All-Stars, we have this tool. It kind of sounds like what you're supposed to say when you have that type of problem. It's called mercy. Mercy. Mercy.
ladies and gentlemen, 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 students, do you have family here with you tonight?
Yes.
Okay, and your family's where? Family, raise your hand. Such a talented group, and we thank you for your talents and your gifts, and for representing the district at such a high level. May you have a prosperous path if you choose music or however, but this was absolutely outstanding, and thank you guys so much.
We are happy to do it.
And parents, thank you.
And if you would like to hear more of their performance, they have a performance this April 30th at the Jazz showcasing on the waterfront. Thank you so, so much, and we hope you all have a joyous night. Thank you.
Thank you. That's amazing. Okay, guys, we will give them a couple of minutes to move out.
So Wendy said he's coming to.
Krista.
He says, "Okay, we're going to make it work." They should be.
I didn't see you stand up.
You waved.
Yeah, that was nice.
That was good. Persons may speak to make a, I mean, who wish to have a public comment, has to complete a card, and each speaker is allowed, allotted up to five minutes, and a tone will sound once your time has expired by our Board Secretary, Ms. Ross. So our first speaker tonight is, is it Honor?
Honor.
Okay, Honor, Anor. Thank you, and thank you for being here.
Yes. Right. Good evening, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk. My name is Honor, and last name is Anar. And I have had privilege to basically teach in Peoria and also in Las Vegas. And one of the things when I was teaching here that actually I saw an opportunity for us to improve on, which is our basically learning platform. We don't have one. And what we can do is like, basically today, what I, what I kind of like recommend, Board, to consider is basically a platform called Canvas. Some of my colleagues basically confuse that with Kenva, it's not, it's cannabis. And I believe, I was able to show that actually some of my colleagues as well, and they really liked it. Also, that platform, what it really does is, you can pretty much create modules, and our students can go there anytime on their free time. And during class, again, like actually, teachers can use it as well. Besides that, you can, like the teachers can give feedback, and this feedback can be seen by students right away. Admin, teachers can see how much time the students spent in each individual module and also page, and I believe that is a great data. So teachers can go back and kind of like edit their module to actually make it even more appealing to their students. And also, the admin can, again, like the school admin, the principal, can see those numbers as well, so they can this way, kind of like keep track of their student's success. This is something that again, like I believe that it is absolutely missing in our system, and we definitely have to work on that. And also, another thing is Infinite Campus, kind of like Canvas, do mix with this Infinite Campus that actually for attendance, and also grading. The system we are using in our school district right now is absolutely ancient. It is not user-friendly at all. And when it comes to, this is like, also like platforms are not that costly either. Even like I have some end outs here, I can give it to you guys later on, to kind of like how we can create funds to actually get these platforms. Again, we have used in Clark County before in Las Vegas, and I believe that it was definitely a lifeline. And especially here, you do guys have like a snow days, or also like some students, they don't have parents, they have guardians, so they don't really have opportunity to kind of like come to school all the time. I know that we are pushing for attendance, but one of the things is, sometimes let's say, if the student misses the class because of their parents or their situation, right? So what we can do is, and also like if they don't, like let's say, if they don't know the subject matter, let's say they couldn't go to class and they don't know it, next day, when they go to class, now they know that actually they are missing that, and most likely they are not even going to ask their teacher or their friends, because they don't want to, like because of their pride. And they are going to miss it. And eventually, if they miss like, let's say, few more days, they will not want to come back to school, because again, they don't know the subject at all now. But this platform, again, Canvas, can give them that flexibility, they can always go back. And also, you can put videos, you can basically put like different type of, again, almost like create a menu for our students. So whoever like learns, if somebody likes to learn by reading, watching videos, this can be done. And also, we can do this in district-wide as well. We can create modules for all our schools that actually teach our kids critical thinking, and also so many other subjects. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And sir, if you will, if that, you could provide a little more detail, you can send it to the Board via email, so that we can physically look at it.
I actually did. Two weeks ago, I sent you guys, all the Board members an email about the Canvas.
Okay.
But I will go ahead and present it to you guys again.
All right, thank you. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
And thank you for your time. Our next speaker is Deb Weiss.
Hello.
Hi.
Wow, that was just such a great meeting. I haven't been to one before, that was just great. Anyways, I was here to talk about a couple of things, and first, I just want to say that I'm not necessarily opposed to what I'm talking about. opposed to what I'm talking about, just, just want to have more understanding and maybe be able to extend this to a, um, just something that continues, it keeps going, so it's not a one-time thing. So, um, we had heard about students going to vote, being brought over on buses, given lunch and a half-day off school, and I just wanted to know more about that.
Well, in this moment, it, it is not a, uh, conversation. If you want some answers to that, you're certainly welcome to send us an, um, email with your questions, and then one of the, um, Board members will appropriately answer back, or, or either the, um, superintendent will. So this is a moment that you just share your feedback on the topic.
Some of the feedback that I have is basically, I mean, um, it didn't feel transparent to me, and so I just, uh, we wanna see about some transparency, transparency, and, uh, also in even... So some of the things that we had concerns about basically were, basically like, just like what I said, being given a half-day off school or whatever it was, and lunch and everything, and being taken to vote, and being told about the candidates at that time, and so those are the concerns, basically.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And you can send that to us via, um, email, please.
You can, you can also send it to me as well. I'll be more than happy to sit with you, meet with you, um, and address any concerns.
Okay, and so, um, I guess just one more thing, just like I was saying, I'm not necessarily opposed to this, but it would be great to have, to be able to teach young students, or however old they are, I guess, but, uh, you know, about voting and everything, and, and having these good habits and everything like that. So it can be a lasting thing, and maybe not just something we hear about later that maybe happened once.
Well, just, um, notable, voting and the process in the country is covered in social studies. It's, um, civic. So voting is a right, and the process as to how students go and vote, if you wanna support that, if you wanna, you know, you can, as, um, Dr. Wilson said, you can, um, reach out. To be clear, there was nothing that was not done that is not transparent, and if you didn't know, uh, about it prior to, do you have students in the district?
Personally, myself?
Yes. Do you have students in the district?
Uh, not at this moment, but, um...
Okay. Have you had children in the district?
Uh, no.
Will you have children in the district?
Not sure.
Okay, all right. Thank you. We, we appreciate you, um, being here tonight.
Okay, so, but, um, now I forgot what I was just gonna say, but, um, let's see, has it been five minutes?
It's almost.
So anyways, I, I just wanna know how we can find out about this ahead of time, how we can find out what was going on, how it was planned, how it's gonna be planned next time and all that.
Yeah, and, and every district parent with a student who has voted knows. So if you're asking for general public knowledge, you have to be a student to be in, um, included, or a parent of a, um, student. So if you're just curious, you can always reach out with your, um, questions. Thank you. Okay, um, does any Board member have any feedback there? Okay, our next item is, um, a approval of February 24th and March 10th meetings, I mean, minutes, 2025. Motion to approve such minutes.
Second.
Okay, Madam Secretary for the role.
Mrs. Kostic.
Mrs. Murray.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Dr. Wilson.
Aye.
President McConnell.
Aye.
We have six ayes. Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Um, next item, um, information item, Superintendent's update.
President McConnell and Board, and just quickly, I was pleasantly surprised with Jazz All-Stars' performance. Um, as Ms. Rose mentioned, that they were sort of assembled rather quickly, and I'm just really so thankful we, we found Mr. Lloyd to take that on for us. I wanted to give credit to Mary Jo Pappage, who started that years and years ago, and I forgot to ask him, uh, 'cause this is not just a Peoria Public Schools, it's not just for Peoria Public School students, but it's open to other students in Peoria County. Um, so I suspect there are, I know there are a number of Peoria Public School students, but we might have maybe one from Dunlap. I know in the past we've had Metamora and other kids like that, so I'm just really thrilled about that coming together. So, um, that will, and then, of course, we're plugging away with, you've heard about testing, and, um, everybody's really doing a really nice job. We just got back from break. Ms. Ross mentioned on Friday, um, Friday will be off and Monday will be off for Easter Monday. Um, so we're just plugging away and, uh, working hard and for the kids. Thank you.
All right, and thank you. Financial, um, update, Mr. Willis.
Year-to-date revenue totaled 181.7 million. Uh, this compared to 170 million, uh, uh, this time last month. Most of that change, uh, related to state and federal funding. On the spending side, year-to-date revenue was 190.2 million. Uh, this time last month, it was 173.5. Uh, salary benefits and capital outlay were the categories where we spent, uh, quite a bit more than we did, um, last month. Uh, in terms of, uh, trends, uh, receipts were 73.7% of budget. Um, typically, we're at about 65 and a half, so we're trending pretty well on the receipt side. On the spending side, uh, we, we were 73.7%. Uh, trends typically are, but this time, uh, of year, about 74%. So, uh, we're where we want to be slightly, uh, under, under budget on the spending side. Be happy to answer any questions anybody might have, but that's a recap of our finances through, uh, April 14th.
I did have one question. Um, we spent, or wrote a check, or made some kind of payment for $5,798,266 and some change to Midwest. Was that for, I just wanted to clarify, was that for buses?
Yes, that was part of the, uh, EPA grant.
That's what I was hoping you were gonna tell me. Perfect. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Um, do we have any other questions? Okay, next item is, uh, proposed expenditures over 2,500. Are there any? Noting, and fourth item, report of requests under the Freedom of Information Act.
Thank you, President McConnell. Thank you, President McConnell. Since a board meeting, uh, a board meeting report on March 10th, we received 15, uh, requests, and there was one pending request noted on March 10th. Um, there is now one, um, total request currently opened. Uh, this concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Um, Dr. Wilson, the consent agenda.
Yes, thank you, President McConnell. The consent agenda consists of the following items. Item number one, gifts to school district. Item number two, payment of bills. Item number three, payment for travel. Item number four, human resource report. Item number five, field trip, Richwoods High School tennis team. Item number six, field trip, Richwoods High School tennis team. Item number seven, authorization to sign application for approval of 10-year safety survey report to Quest Schools. Two is in T-W-O, two Quest Schools. Item number eight, Glen Barton Building Abatement Project. Item number nine, Glen Barton Tunnel Abatement Project. Item number 10, Treewind Abatement Project. Item number 11, extension of food service contract. Item number 12, settlement agreement and release of claims, and that is the entirety of the consent agenda.
Well, did you read number four, human resource?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, just, just one note. I, I wanna pull number seven just for, um, clarity for a separate vote. Does any other Board member need clarification on anything? Okay, so eight, nine, and 10. All right, and for item number four, human resource with a pending clarification of a job title, um, seeing that, Board, what is your pleasure for those items with the exception of seven, eight, and nine?
So, um, I'll make a motion. Wait.
I'll move to, move to approve.
Yeah, I'll move to approve.
Okay, sec. All right, thank you. Any discussion? With the HR report? With those numbered, we're, we are, uh, approving all the items except number seven, eight, and nine. We're gonna pull those for a separate vote. Okay? And 10, I'm sorry. All right, motion on the floor. Madam Secretary, roll call.
Mrs. Kostic.
Mrs. Murray.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose. Mrs. Ross. Dr. Wilson.
Aye.
President McConnell.
Aye.
We have six ayes. Motion carries.
Okay, um, question on number seven, the authorization for a 10-year safety, uh, report. Is this, um, is this an additional cost?
It's routine.
But is it an additional cost than our current budget?
That's, that's the life safety, the 10-year life safety that we have to do every year. I mean, every 10 years.
Is it an additional cost?
The life safety survey was, uh, it had about $58,000 worth of items, uh, included in it that was in your, uh, presentation. Those were just items that were, um, uh, identified, um, in the 10-year study.
Okay, so the cost, it is an additional cost of $58,000?
If those items are, are done, it would be additional, yes.
Okay, that's the, uh, question. So this 10-year safety survey report for the two schools is an additional $58,000?
The, there is money to, there is money budgeted, there is money budgeted to address those.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, um...
That's the life safety money. Yes.
Yeah, there, those, uh, those surveys are paid for with life safety monies. The items that were identified are, uh, paid for with life safety monies, and we have a life safety budget that can accommodate that expense.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mrs., Mrs. Kostic?
Yep, Mr. Willis will take that one. Thank you for asking. Mr. Willis will answer that one.
The, uh, abatement project at Glen Barton is two-part. Um, one is classrooms. Um, the other is basically a couple of classrooms. The other, uh, is basically the tunnel area. Um, and so the, uh, number eight relates to a couple of classrooms. Number nine, which is the tunnel, um, relates, relates to, uh, the tunnel area at the Glen Barton School. It's, it's asbestos abatement.
Okay.
It's on, on the, on the, uh, basement level of that building.
We should take a tour there sometime. I think it's ready for a tour.
We, we can.
Okay, and you had a, uh, clarification?
The, the tunnel, but Mr. Willis did a good job. It's, yeah, it's in the basement. Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, and then, is that, so that covers number eight, nine, 10, correct? Okay, Board, what is your, um, pleasure, um, on items seven, eight, nine, and 10?
Like a motion to adopt items seven, eight, nine, and 10 from the consent agenda.
Right, Madam Secretary for the role.
Mrs. Kostic. Mrs. Murray.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Dr. Wilson.
Aye.
President McConnell.
Aye.
We have six ayes. Motion carries.
Okay.
President McConnell, can I say something quickly? In reference to the, um, that position and what the, 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 the position would be doing, I got some clarification from Ms. McCracken, and it's actually the same title that's currently, that was currently being held by that previous project we talked about earlier. And, um, and so the, the responsibility is really just coordinating, it's not writing, it's a coordinator of the project. So I wanted to provide that clarity for the Board. Does that make sense? So they'll be coordinating, um, the project, getting the data, so they're, they're in charge of, um...
Oh, that's for the, uh, HR report?
Yes, yes, ma'am, yes.
Okay.
I think that's what the state, uh, Robin, you wanna add to that? The, the title was confusing to them, and I told them I would get McConnell.
There's a coordinator, and then there's people underneath, so they're reporting and payroll and all that goes there. Then it comes to me, and I do the final approval, but you have to have somebody through that tiered system. You can't be the writer and then...
Robin is the writer, Ms. McCracken.
What was confusing us was, um, the term grant coordinator. And so we were looking at, 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 as grant, as in grant writing and so forth.
No, it's, the coordinator is the same title that she, they're holding at the other.
Project.
And there's one over 21st Century. There's one over all the grants. But I write the grants and then, um, yeah, oversee, so.
So just for clarification on that same issue, uh, the coordinator is not, uh, does not have people reporting to them, so that they would have to do evaluations on them, right?
Not evaluations, not.
Mm-hmm, shouldn't have people reporting to them, okay. Okay, so that takes care of our pending clarification on, on item four. Um, deliberation agenda?
Uh, yes, deliberation agenda. Item number 13, expulsion with the expulsion to be held in abance. Proposed action that the Board of Education approved expulsion with the expulsion held in abance listed on the report dated April 14th, 2025 be approved as presented.
Second. Okay, Madam Secretary for the role.
Mrs. Kostic.
Aye.
Mrs. Murray.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross. Dr. Wilson.
Aye.
President McConnell.
Aye.
We have six ayes. Motion carries.
Item number 14, expulsion. Proposed action that the Board of Education approved the expulsion listed on the report dated April 14th, 2025 be approved as presented.
Second. Madam Secretary for the role.
Mrs. Kostic.
Aye.
Mrs. Murray.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross. Dr. Wilson.
Aye.
President McConnell.
Aye.
We have six ayes. Motion carries.
Item number 15, suspension review. Proposed action that the Board of Education approved the suspension review listed on the report dated April 14th, 2025 be approved as presented.
Second. Madam Secretary for the role.
Mrs. Kostic.
Aye.
Mrs. Murray.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross. Dr. Wilson.
Aye.
President McConnell.
Aye.
We have six ayes. Motion carries.
Item number 16, revocation of expulsion held in abance. Proposed action that the Board of Education approved the revocation of expulsion held in abance listed on the report dated April 14th, 2025 be approved as presented.
Second. Madam Secretary for the role.
Mrs. Kostic.
Aye.
Mrs. Murray.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross. Dr. Wilson.
Aye.
President McConnell.
Aye.
We have six ayes. Motion carries.
Okay, presentation and suggestions by, by any Board members?
Just, just, uh, uh, one thing. Um, I think I've been on the Board now for about seven years, and this was the best meeting that I've ever been to, and that's no shade to any other meeting or anything like that, but the talent that was displayed from the Jazz to honoring those students that, that played those sports and are city champs, I just wanna say this was the best, so.
Excellent.
We can put that on record.
It is so ordered.
Yeah, the timeframe was impressive.
Um, okay, thank you. Anybody else have any, um, presentations or other recommendations? Reports from Board, um, committees, policy, buildings and ground, PTO group and behavioral?
Building and grounds will meet on Thursday, April the 24th at 9:30 a.m.
Okay.
The Behavioral Intervention Committee's next meeting is May 15th at 7:00 p.m. virtually.
Policy Committee will get a date and inform the public here shortly.
All right, all right. Um, all hearts and minds clear, motion to adjourn?
I'll move.